I'm Tom Jacobs and Chair of the Board. Even though my placard has been removed, there's some anticipation of my vacancy, I guess. Because everybody else has one. But I know who they are, but maybe we can share with the audience your names and the fact you do have a placard?
Here's what I want to hurry.
Good evening Chad Gordon.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening Carson Terber.
Thank you so much for coming, I'm Jean Connor.
And I'm Dan Moaks, I'm sitting in for Stuart Hurd, the Town Manager.
Okay, we always start with a pledge of allegiance, would you like to lead us on that, Jim?
Sure. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks very much. We do as a matter of course have our consent agenda, the minutes of February 11th, 2019, have been circulated along with the warrants. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as circulated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion or changes to the consent agenda or the minutes that were recorded and very well done, February 11th? Hearing none, all in favor signify of your approval of the consent agenda by aye.
Aye.
And there's seven in favor and no one objecting to it. As is our practice, we have an opportunity for folks to come and speak with the Select Board about matters that are not on the agenda, and from what I can see, there's just Rachel Blumenthal who's signed up already. Good evening Rachel.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak and I'd like to share a proposal for the Board to consider. I'm here in regard to the investigation that was recently recommended by Vermont's Attorney General TJ Donovan. I've been following the issues in Bennington concerning bias in our local police department and in our justice system, and given the recent events in our community and the particular significance they have to people of color in our community, I feel a need to speak up. The Attorney General has recommended that Bennington have an outside review done of its police departments' policies and procedures. TJ says, in quotes, "This action staff will promote and maintain the public trust in the Bennington Police Department." He also says, in quotes, "Maintaining public trust and public safety are the top priorities for law enforcement." In both the Bennington banner and in a conversation that I had with Mr. Hurd earlier this week, my understanding is that Mr. Hurd will be the one hiring the individual or firm to do the review. I have questions about how one individual can make such a decision given the scope of this type of review. To build trust in our community, especially our community of color, who is doing the review and what the focus of the review are two crucial questions to be asking. I believe that there needs to be a discussion by a group that is more diverse and inclusive from our community to make these decisions. When we talk about building public trust, we talk about all of the public, not just some of the public. I think I speak for many, including members of the Select Board, when I say that our goal with this is to build a community that is safe and welcoming for all. So in the name of public trust, I'd like to ask the Select Board to take the time to consider a proposal that the decision about who will conduct the review and the scope of the review will be decided by a group of both Select Board members and members of the community, including several people of color. A more diverse and inclusive group will result in a review that everybody will have more faith in. I want to thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
That's appreciated that you're sharing that with you, with us. I can, just not in response because really a conversation, we're not at this particular point in time, ready to move forward, but those are, you know, it's a good proposal. It's not something that Stu Hurd, as our manager, is just going to hire a consultant. I can tell you that this Board is going to be actively engaged in that, and it will be engaged by the Board on behalf of the community. Your suggestion of maybe bringing in community members into that participation, I think that's something that the Board really would have to have a dialogue about, but I can tell you that the decision is going to be Board-driven.
Okay.
And an evaluation of the practice and procedures, and it's, this does not purport to be an investigation, I can assure you that, it's an evaluation of the practice and procedures.
Okay.
I'd like to make just-
Are there opportunities for the public to be part of that, to do input with that decision-making?
I think the Board has to decide as a group, and we probably have to do that, because I really, it's not part of the agenda tonight.
Right.
I think we really have to bring in that into discussion.
I'd just like to make one clarification.
Yeah.
For you and the general public. We asked the Attorney General to head up the appointment of a commission, for lack of a better phrase, and he declined.
Right.
And put it back on the town.
But the town does have a responsibility, and I think we will, as a Board, take that responsibility ourselves, and not delegate that to our manager. It's not fair to him either.
Yeah, being on the agenda and being able to have some input in the community, just so that people can have more faith in, you know, the outcome, so, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Tom, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, has there been a timeline on when the evaluation is supposed to, no, there is no timeline yet, okay.
I do know that Mr. Hurd, I mean, in my conversation with him, had begun a discussion with somebody, you know, so I just wanted to, in terms of timeline, you know, be more proactive versus reactive, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, which is part of the business of the evening, is the public hearing relative to the ladder truck bond, which is part of the bond vote that'll occur next week, hard to believe. This is on the agenda and the public hearing is required as part of the statutory responsibility. That's why this hearing is taking place. I believe that Chief DeSette and Chief Vickers will be making a presentation as part of the public hearing. We will give that opportunity to, to the Chiefs, to proceed.
Thank you.
And just so that the public is aware, the Select Board did hear from the Department and Chief DeSette during our budget time, so we, a lot of this information that's going to be shared tonight is probably something that Select Board already has. So this is really for the purpose of the public getting information relative to the rationale for the vote at the bond, and we'll proceed from that.
Okay. Thank you for the chance to speak. I guess what it really boils down to, from our point of view, from the fire department point of view, our goal is to provide the best fire service to the residents of Bennington that we can do. We're an all-volunteer department, everybody on the department gives a lot of time and time away from the families and work and everything else to try to do that job the best they can, and one of the critical pieces of that is the equipment that we have to fight the fires with. And the ladder truck that we currently have was originally purchased in 1997. It was slated at that time to be what they call a 20-year truck, so it would have been replaced a couple of years ago at this point. Due to the way things go and budgets and everything else, it didn't happen according to the original plan, and it is starting to show its age. It is usable, we try to take good care of the equipment, keep it clean, keep it functional, but unfortunately as things age, much like your personal vehicles, they'll start to develop issues and problems. Mechanical things, rust, and Vermont unfortunately happens as well. Looking at it at this point, if we were to receive a vote that was, that allowed us to move forward, we would not place an order for the new ladder truck until this new year, which would be July of 2019, and currently the build time for something like that is right around one year, so it would be somewhere July 2020. At that point, the truck will be 23-years-old. And I'll just read, so there's National Fire Protection Association puts out consensus standards, recommendations for fire departments. The one that I'm going to read from is 1901, which is a standard for automotive fire apparatus, and they discuss fire trucks basically, and what they recommend is, and I'll just read a short section here, is to maximize firefighter capabilities and minimize risk of injuries, it is important that fire apparatus be equipped with the latest safety features and operating capabilities. In the last 10 to 15 years, much progress has been made in upgrading functional capabilities and improving the safety features of fire apparatus. Apparatus more than 15-years-old might include only a few of the safety upgrades required of the recent additions of the NFPA Fire Department Apparatus Standards or equivalent UL or Canadian standards. So when you buy a new truck, they have to meet the requirements of NFPA. So with that said, because of these changes, upgrades, and training to NFPA have been truly significant changes, I'm sorry, especially in the area of safety, fire departments should seriously consider the value or risk to firefighters of keeping fire apparatus more than 15-years-old in first-line service. And then they go on to say that at 15-years, it should be refurbished, put it in reserve status, and then the apparatus that were not manufactured to the applicable standard, the current standard, or that are over 25-years-old should be replaced. So that's their stance on it. Certainly, there are communities that can't afford to do that, and they don't do that, but if it is something that you can afford to do, I think it helps us as a department serve the people of Bennington more effectively. And I'd like to just talk about a few of the reasons why it's critical in Bennington to have it. To me, and I'm actually the past fire chief now, Jim Wright is now the chief, he just recently took over, but you know, when I was chief, my main concerns are, you have smaller fires, you have building fires, those can be stressful, but we do pretty well with those. We had one last night on Main Street, right next to the old Stewart's, managed to put the fire out pretty quickly. But the ones that scare me are something like a Main Street fire, or the hospital, some of the facilities that have elderly people in them that aren't mobile or possibly able to get out on their own, that are multi-story. And with the Main Street fire, if you don't have something like the ladder truck or aerial device at home, the possibility of that fire spreading from building to building where they are close to each other is significantly increased, to the point where, and that's a big part of why fire departments were founded, you could lose a whole city block, which would be devastating to Bennington. You know, we don't want that to ever happen, obviously, it may never happen, but this is an insurance policy, there have been Main Street fires, there will be more Main Street fires, this helps us do that, but really what it boils down to is life safety. Over the last couple of years, we've had the ladder truck out of service numerous times for failures. We've had pump issues, we've had valves that needed to be replaced, plumbing that needed to be replaced, we've had outrigger issues due to corrosion, but most recently we've had a valve issue, but the one that scares me the most is about, three months ago, we were on a mutual aid drill with Bennington Earl, and we were picking up and one of the outriggers mechanically catastrophically failed to where it was no longer functional. 15-minutes sooner, earlier than that, someone was on the ladder truck, and when we were going up and down the truck, the ladder, we're not hooked in, we're free climb up, free climb down, you hook in at the tip. So if somebody had been walking up or down, we had two or three people on the ladder, and that outrigger had failed sooner, the truck could have gone to the side, dumped those guys off of there, and it could have been catastrophic. So, the things like that, those really concern me, you know, the safety of the firefighters is number one to me. Looking at the truck, it's getting older, it's reaching these NFPA maximums, so I think it is a critical thing for Bennington to think about, help us do the job that we're trying to do and do the best job we can.
Okay. Chief, are you going to, I had to-
So I was tasked- Hey. So I was tasked with looking at the existing ladder truck and trying to determine what it would cost to refurb that truck. In that project, we learned that it was going to be about $250,000 to refurbish the current truck that we have. We estimate that the truck that we currently have is worth between $50,000 and $60,000. So if we refurbished the truck and took taxpayer money, put it in $250,000 into the truck, and then something were to go wrong with the truck, or we would have a crash, or some catastrophic failure, we would be out that $250,000, because the insurance company is only going to give us the value of the truck. So if we're going to be fiscally responsible, which we're trying to be, we are asking that the taxpayers approve a bond so that we can purchase a new ladder truck. There have been some questions that I have fielded between last week and this week, you know, why hasn't the town put money away for this purchase? And we have been putting money away for this purchase. We do have a reserve account with some money set aside. Rough estimate of the money that would be available to put towards the purchase of this truck is about a quarter of what we need to purchase the truck, it's about $250,000, could be a little bit more than that. The other thing I want to share with you is, is we often find ourselves compared to Brattleboro, and I've been watching what's happened over the past year in Brattleboro with their fire department, and the Brattleboro Fire Department's ladder truck is currently 26-years-old, they had to take that out of service. They had to buy a used truck while they await their new truck. Their new truck should be there in May of 2019. So the other thing that I want to share during this public hearing is that if we were to order the truck in July or August of 2019, we would not realize that truck here in Bennington until July or August of 2020, and then our first payment would not be due until July of 2021. There are incentives, there are breaks, if you are able to pay for your truck upfront, which we clearly are not able to do at this point. I think that the Select Board is fiscally responsible, and we try to keep property taxes down in Bennington, and, you know, but we have, again, I want to reiterate, that we have been putting money aside for the purchase of this truck in anticipation. We've been asked by the Board, by previous Boards, to put this purchase off, because we weren't able to do it, but I think that, you know, we really waited long enough, and again, by the time we order this and by the time we take delivery, it's going to be just over a year. So, it's time to do it.
If I could just add, as far as the financial part of it, you know, I've looked at the benefits of the volunteer fire department versus a paid fire department, and I think it's one of the few things that I, a part of that I feel, I feel very proud, it's not a few, but I feel very proud of it, but one of the few things, it's often overlooked, the value, and they've done a number of studies in the value of each volunteer to the community, and looking at other paid departments in Vermont, just Vermont, if we were to have a paid department, it would be significantly higher fire taxes just due to the personnel. So I think for the taxpayers of Bennington, although this is a significant purchase, the value they're receiving for their fire tax dollar is significant, and not nearly what it would be in a community with a paid department, to the effect of you could probably buy a couple of ladder trucks each and every year if you had to have a paid fire department versus this volunteer organization. So it's a tremendous savings with the volunteers, although this is a large expense, I think overall, the net was benefit to the taxpayer.
Those welcome comments, but I would like to hear from the audience, if you have any questions, I'm the Chief, because it's a public hearing, open to everyone. If you have any particular questions that have not been answered or anticipated, because I think you've really flushed out a lot of the concerns that we at the Board level had during budget time. The essence of it is, you know, we've got a lot of reason to be proud of our volunteer fire department. The fire department has every reason to be really proud of its activities. Not that this should be a trade-off, you know, to keep everyone happy, but the essence of it is, we need to be safe and equipped for that volunteer fire department going forward. So it's really the community's call, but I just want to repeat what the entire Board said during the budget process and exchange, that we are so fortunate to have this department and the volunteers, because we've also seen the diminution, the fact that a lot of these volunteer fire departments are going by the wayside and being replaced by paid force, and whatever we can do, and that doesn't mean this is an equal trade-off, because I don't think it is, we want to make sure that our department is readily equipped to handle all of the safety emergencies it has to.
Yeah, and I do think, there was a study done a number of years ago by the US Fire Service about its recruiting and retaining in the emergency services, and they look at why people aren't volunteering to the level they used to, and what can be done to recruit and retain volunteers, and almost everything was financial for, a financial benefit to the individual firefighter, except for one thing, and that was routine and regular purchase of fire apparatus. That is, it was actually cited, in their research, they found that the newer apparatus that was provided to them instilled a sense that they wanted to continue to serve and helps recruit new people, because they're not dealing with older, broken-down equipment, they do have the right tools to do the job, so that is one of the very few, maybe the only thing that is a benefit that is purely to allow them to do their job better, so, yeah, so thank you.
And the other part of that is that previous Boards have been pretty light on the reserve side of this thing, and this Board and a couple of others prior to ours have basically been more aggressive in reserving for replacement, and now this is obviously a significant replacement item, but you've got to have a depreciation process, and unfortunately, our community has not been doing that until the last couple of years, so we're fortunate to have a quarter of a million or less that we've got in reserve, which would be good. Also, Chief Vickers, I want to personally thank you for the years of your service, when I had a chance to be on the, and visit with you during budget times, your presentations have always been excellent, your leadership has been, should be commended, and we appreciate that service.
Thank you.
Any Board comments beyond?
I hope so.
Yep.
Chief, if we went through the quarter-million-dollar refurbishment, would that be done in-house or would it have to be farmed out?
No, it would be farmed out.
So we'd be without a truck?
For probably like the period of time.
Yeah. Well, I do want to give you a little shaft of light, ray of hope, that Representative Morrissey submitted a charter change that would include a 1% option tax, which would likely raise approximately a million dollars a year, and it probably wouldn't, and by the way, to give credit where credit is due, the rest of the Bennington delegation, including myself, co-sponsored it, and so we're hopeful that that'll get done. So instead of having to look forward to floating a bond, we may be able to pay for it out of the option tax.
I think that probably is something we can anticipate, as I share with you.
Well, the timeline that the Chief was talking about, 2020.
Maybe by then we'll already have bonded the process, but the payments would not be due until-
Right.
-first, so, and that's, there's a long process, as you know, to get approval for a local sales tax option, so, we'll see. Anything else, Jim?
No.
To you, Justin.
I have a question. So, the truck is obviously in and out of the shop. How would you manage a fire if it was in the shop but you needed a ladder truck?
So what we do typically, so if it's out of service, the nearest ladder truck is whose it falls, it's quite old, it goes out of service as well, they call us, and to let us know, so we would follow that, and then the next best thing would be Manchester, so it would be a delayed response.
So there's no way to fight a fire if it's however many stories high without a ladder truck?
Well, there are ways, there's, so there's two different scenarios, so there's a rescue scenario, so our ladder truck, our ground ladders on the trucks, the longest we have is 35-feet, so if it was above 35-feet, we would not be able, and the ladder truck itself is 100-feet right now, 105, so there's significantly more reach with the ladder truck to get to higher floors. So if we didn't have that ability, we'd have to either go in and try to effect a rescue through the interior, which either may not be possible, or more dangerous, depending on the situation. And then as far as putting out the fire, you can have ground nozzles that can flow a lot of water, but unfortunately, sometimes you can only get in through the windows from the front or the back, or if you can't get to the sides, where the aerial device allows you to position above, especially once it's gone through the roof, and it drop, ours currently does about 1,500 gallons a minute, which is a tremendous amount of water that has an immediate effect on most fires. Now, a huge fire, obviously, your fire flows have to overcome how much is burning, but in general, it is a huge advantage when fighting fires that are difficult to access, and also to perform those rescues if those happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good. I just, again, thank you for all the time and energy you've put in, and then welcome to Jimmy, as, I don't know when the exact transition happens, if it's already happened.
It's happened, yeah, end of July, or January, I'm sorry. We're on January.
That's great. And some of these questions that I have, I'll phrase them as questions, or more comments, because we've dialogued on them already, but for maybe people who missed round one of this, it might just be a good reminder to them. Paul, you had mentioned that $250,000 refurb, and then you had a trade-in price of $50,000 to $60,000. Is there any documentation on that? Could you offer that, maybe submit it, so we could have people take a look at it, or where those numbers came from?
Those numbers came from speaking with people from around the state of Vermont who have purchased ladder trucks or attempted to refurb ladder trucks, and then calling respective companies to try to determine what would be best. And each individual, I mean, I didn't get any written quotes, because that would require bringing the ladder truck to a facility, but, I mean, if that's something that the Board is interested in, you know, it's a matter of finding people to drive the truck down to Connecticut, and, you know.
I'm less curious about the cost of the refurb, it's interesting, of course, the $250,000 number is a number that I would shy away from, but on the $50,000 or $60,000, the trade-in value, that's a number that we've received, somebody has come inspected the truck and given us some, a value for that?
We've done that based on looking at other trucks online and what we've been told by representatives.
Okay.
Yeah, comparables online, currently there are a number of sites that have fire apparatus for sale, including, you know, same year, same model.
Okay.
So that's where that was from.
And we're fortunate that our ladder truck currently has, can carry water and has a pump, because if it did not, it probably would be worth next to nothing.
That, and that also impacts our insurance rating, so periodically, it's ISO does insurance ratings for communities, and what they consider, it's a complex formula, so I can't exactly predict what the impact would be cost-wise, but your home insurance rates are based on those ratings, and those ratings are based on a number of factors, the fire department training, water supply of the town, but a big part of it is your fire apparatus, if you have an aerial device, it's recommended by them, if you have more than five buildings, or five or more buildings that are 35-feet, or five stories or more, that it's recommended to have an aerial device to protect those communities.
And that's some of the information you shared with us before, I just think it's good to reiterate it and kind of offer where that $250,000 cost comes from, where the $50,000 or $60,000 trade-in value comes from, so it's just nice to know that they're not just arbitrary. You guys actually did the research, you can provide documentation, those are all things that are important. You hinted at it, but the, and I kind of did the math in my head, you said a couple ladder trucks a year, which in my mind would be a couple million dollars.
Correct.
What, do you just maybe want to confirm that number?
Sure.
If a staff of your size in a community like ours, what would it cost to pay you folks?
Yeah, what I did, I looked at, when I was looking at it, I looked at the town reports for the communities in Vermont that have paid fire departments, and looked at their budgets compared to our budget, and they break it down the same way we do, and basically, you know, how much per person served in the community, and it was anywhere from three to four times, five times as much, based on the numbers. Now, this is years old now that I've done this, but I would imagine ratios are similar, but I think at the time, Bennington, I estimated we were about $44 per person served per year, and the paid departments were anywhere from 120, 150 to $194 per person served. And those numbers were strictly based on salary, insurances, different things that they received, so I think if you look, you could look, I think, at Brattleboro, Burlington, Rutland, those paid departments, you can look at their budgets in their town reports, and they're typically $2 to $3 million a year.
Right. And again, I know you shared that with us, but it's just probably in my mind the most important piece of this whole puzzle, the idea that you guys volunteer your time to be out here, you keep our budget significantly lower because of that fact.
Yes.
So, all right, that's a- So, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carson. I'm going right down.
So, yeah, I'd like to join everybody else in thanking you for being here tonight. Also, great presentations at Budget Time. You gave us a lot of information. We put you through the wringer then. These folks and everybody else have an opportunity to put you through the wringer now. I'm going to give you a softball here, and I'm not sure if you're prepared for it or not, but I think if I'm a taxpayer watching this program tonight, thinking about a $1.2 million bond, I'm thinking, that seems like a lot of money. But what's it actually going to mean to me in taxes? What's it actually going to do to my tax rate? Have you pushed any numbers on that that you'd care to share or?
I was hoping to defer to Stu on those type of questions. Do you have any information? I don't know how that would impact the tax rate. I know it wouldn't be significant.
Do you know what the annual payment would be? I can't remember from.
I don't. I couldn't say. One point that we were talking about earlier too is, you know, this building, we typically had a payment for this building. It's now paid off. So that kind of is another school of thought, is that the money that was going towards paying this building now would go to the ladder truck. So the impact over the last few years would be minimal, or minimized anyway.
The change, the delta would be greater.
Isn't it one cent for $100,000?
I thought it was, or I think it was $10 on your tax bill for a $100,000 house, I think is what I remember from our budget meeting, so. But I can't remember.
That wouldn't be fair. Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair to really put that out there, I guess.
Is it a 20-year bond?
I'm not sure what the plan is.
Yeah, in talking with Stu, and he's not here, so I, you know, we were looking at different scenarios based on interest rates and things like that, to not overburden the taxpayers, but at the same time to get the truck paid off before we had to buy another one. You know, I mean, our rescue pumper truck, we bought as a 25-year truck, you know, and, you know, as far as the ladder truck goes, I believe that we'd be making this as a 20-year truck. And I believe the goal was to pay it off in 15 years so that we had that five years. But, I mean, again, we always look to Stuart for things like that. He's very, very good at bouncing those numbers and calculating. And, you know, for a while, you know, with the government shutdown, we were very concerned. We weren't able to get the numbers that we wanted, you know, so, but I don't think it was awful excessive.
Well, I guess the point I was trying to make, make it available for you to make, is that by doing a bond and by spreading it out over time and by spreading it out over the whole community, it would have a relatively small impact on each individual. So if it's a $100,000 a year payment, it is, I think, would increase your taxes by a little under 2%. So I'm not sure what the payment is.
I think it would be less than that.
So, point being that it would be in the, in the very small number of percent range. So each individual taxpayer would feel a very small increase from this.
Yeah, I do believe that to be true. I apologize, I don't have the exact figures.
I'm sorry, I put you on the spot.
No, not at all. You're absolutely right. I wish I had.
Maybe that's a number we could push out before town meeting or at town meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, so, anyway. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, real quirky. My question is just, so our truck is old. At what point do, it's worth $50,000 maybe now if we trade it in. At what point is it not worth anything? I mean, do we have like five more years, 10 more years?
Yeah. Well, I think when you hit the 25-year mark, so that's the max recommended life, it will take it even, it'd always be worth something. And there are smaller communities that would, it's a choice of this or nothing, they'll make that choice because that's their only choice to make. But once it reaches the 25-year mark, I think that's when you'll see an even more significant truck.
And so is there any market, so one doesn't sell directly, right? I mean, you wouldn't sell to another department that then would have it refurbished?
Not, that could happen. The last time we sold a truck, we used a broker that is familiar with different departments. And it was a department in Indiana that purchased it and refurbished it on their own and after the fact. So I'm not sure how this would happen, if we had interest or not, that we could avoid that to save that brokerage fee, but I'm not sure how it would play out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I guess I had similar questions about the trade-in process or buyback. So you guys have answered those, so thank you. I guess my other thought is, is if that happens, does that money go right into the fire fund? Would that help for turnout gear or would that go into a general fund? Because I know every year there's the different, you know, turnout gear and different equipment you guys like to purchase every year, so.
I would, I'm not positive on this, and you might be able to remember, but I think it went into the truck reserve fund the last time. But I'm not positive on that.
Okay. Thank you, guys. You did an excellent job.
What's the number on the, at this point, that our members of the department?
It's holding steady. It's around, we limit our membership rolls to around 100. Used to be a waiting list. Now we're probably around 60 to 65. Current members of those, about 25, 30 are active still, you know. So it is down from where we'd like it to be. We need new, younger people to do the hard work, so I don't have to. But, yeah, it's definitely below where we'd like it to be. You need a certain number of people to perform, like last night, for example, at that fire. You need people going in, you need people on the trucks, you need people checking the scene and bringing equipment. So there's a minimum number of people you need to safely do that type of a fire attack or rescue. And we've managed to stay above that number, but you could always use more. I think that'd be important going forward in years to come, especially for Jim and others, is recruiting and retaining, to actively participate on the town level and the fire department level, to join together to figure out how to really do that effectively.
Jim, did you have a thought or question?
No, I'm off.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, there was a hand, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just wondering, will this upgrade on the truck be a benefit as far as my insurance and all that?
I think it won't be a benefit if you, if we were to lose a ladder truck, it would be a negative. So it maintains it at its current level. I don't believe there would be any significant ultimate functional changes for how it performs and how much water it carries and things like that that would affect that. But it keeps the negative of it going away from happening, so, yeah.
Please.
Any consideration for the leasing? Truck, you know, given that the FPA did change their recommendations.
Right. I'm not sure how Stu, he handles all of the financial parts of it, so I'm not involved with that, and I can't answer. But I'm sure he looks at all the options to figure out which one is the best from a financial point of view. But I don't know if you could comment, if you have any information on.
Well, what he's asking about, whether it would be a long-term savings to lease over buy.
Right.
Given the length of ownership of the vehicle, I'm not sure it would, but I can't answer that question explicitly.
I think Stu during Budget Time represented that 15-year bond was the outside. That's what would have, that would be the best that we could arrange, even though you have a 20- or 25-year amortization of the vehicle.
Right.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and we appreciate it, and good luck. And are you going to be here March of meeting?
I can be, certainly, and Jim will be as well, so.
Great. Nothing more to introduce. That'd be great.
All right. Well, thank you all for.
Thanks very much, both chiefs.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, our climate advocates, Bennington are going to offer a presentation. Dr. Dundas, are you leading on or is it? Got a few of the chairs to move in. Take your time.
Actually, Mike McDonough is going to speak briefly. Briefly.
Once you get settled, go right ahead.
Mike, will this pick up? I'm standing. I'm sitting in the midst of a very august group. And it occurred to me on the way down.
Maybe you just did better introduce yourself, even though we all know you.
Yes, I will, I'm sorry. Michael McDonough, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm also here this evening is Robert Ebert, a fellow commissioner. But then, Robert is always here. It occurred to me, driving down, that this is truly an interesting day to be talking about climate and energy consumption. The reason that I'm leading off is that the Bennington Climate Advocates have appeared before the Planning Commission twice in the last couple of months to explain to us the role that they see possibly playing within our community and have outlined their thoughts in terms of vision and in terms of particular process steps, which I believe is what you're going to be hearing from them this evening. The one thing that, two things that I wanted to emphasize as a prelude to their presentation is that we have a fairly extensive Bennington Energy Plan, and for a long time, energy, both in terms of production and consumption, have been addressed in our town plans, and the most recent adoption being 2015. And all of those references do include the Bennington Energy Committee, which played a very vital role a number of years ago relative to our town plan. And I think that the principal purpose of the advocates here this evening is to make assistance available to the Select Board in reestablishing that Energy Committee. Principal point number two is that the Planning Commission has endorsed their efforts as they were presented to us, because we strongly feel the need to not only continue to address, to maintain addressing these issues, but we can't do that without the reestablishment of the Bennington Energy Committee. And so that's the position that the Town Planning Commission has taken, and we wanted to communicate that to the board as you listen to their presentation this evening. And with that, I will take my leave.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. That's a good introduction.
Thank you for having us. Many of the people in the audience and also the people at the table here are members of this Climate Advocates of Bennington. That's the same group that presented a few weeks ago about plastic bags. We're a local group. We're a node of 350 Vermont, which is a statewide organization, I think actually a national organization. We meet monthly at the Second Congregational Church. And we have great concern about climate change and how it may lead to terrible problems with our planet. As a, I might say that if anyone has in the audience has interest in participating, then please join us. We meet on the second Wednesday of each month at the Second Congregational Church. We're here today to ask that the Select Board form an Energy Committee. And the reasons for such a committee are that the threat of global warming is very real, and the wind is howling out there tonight, perhaps as a result of that. We need to switch from fossil fuel to renewable energy. We need to make the town more energy efficient. And both of these initiatives, switching from fossil fuel to renewable energy and also making the town more energy efficient, is almost guaranteed to provide jobs in the community. In addition, the Town Plan Energy Element was created and is dated 8/7/17. And I wanted to just read from that document. It says that the town, quote, "should reestablish, maintain, and support a municipal energy committee", end of quote. The Select Board has already approved this town plan. And so we, climate advocates, are here to give the town a little nudge to move forward. The next, our next speaker is Madison Kramer, and she works for BCRC. She's not been here very long, but she's already been a big help to us. And the BCRC encourages each town in the county to have an Energy Committee, and so we want to make sure that Bennington is among those. Madison?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. It's a pleasure meeting some of you for the first time. I am Madison Kramer. I am the Americor Vista currently with the BCRC. I've been there since November and will be there till the next November. I've been working with the Climate Advocates of Bennington here for the past few months as they are working on to create a committee. And one of my main responsibilities with the BCRC is to help support and start energy committees, and that is a goal of the BCRC. And the past month, we hosted an energy forum where we had over 50 individuals come out from around the region who are interested in creating committees. So we saw participation from all kinds of communities around the area. And hopefully, I'm in conversations with five other communities to start committees. And I want to just take the time before introducing David to talk about why it's important to start a municipal committee and to, sorry. So as Dick and Michael pointed out, energy committees give teeth to the plans that the town and the regional commission enact. And recently, a Boston Globe article was published and got a lot of attention regionally for saying some kind of stark things. It said, the title was "In Vermont, A Progressive Haven Emissions Spike Forces, Emissions Spike Forces Officials To Consider Drastic Action". And it reads, "Airport released last year found that emissions had actually increased 16% over 1990 levels, a startling divergence from the goal, which was to reduce greenhouse gases by 25% below 1990 levels by 2012. 14 years later, the zeal in the Green Mountain State has yielded not so much cleaner air but embarrassment." So that shows what happens when plans don't have teeth. And beyond public image, there's a lot of other reasons for creating committees. I recently got an email from someone who attended the energy forum, who is a clean energy developer in the state, and he said that he has troubles working in the Bennington County because there aren't these liaisons, like energy committees, to really go to for citing, for permitting, and for rallying public interest. So it does shepherd green jobs and green industry as well as save towns money. I've been working with VCAN up in Montpelier, and they come out with reports pretty regularly about how much money the energy committees around the state can save their towns, given just a little drop of, you know, resources from the town. And they help residents and taxpayers in saving money by weatherizing and undertaking projects. And they also build community. Climate change is really not a happy subject for a lot of people, but really building community and networking with people to make sure that we're taking action can be a little sign of hope. So I have some of the mission and functions that I've been working with David to create. They have been working really hard to put that together, so if anybody doesn't have them, we sent them around.
Right, we got them yesterday, and I noticed that there were three different potential options per se. Is that correct?
Yeah, so David will present the mission and functions to you. Yes, so David will present the mission and functions to you.
(inaudible) It has a strange presentation that we've prepared for you. Now, one of the reasons is that there are some people who don't like proposals that just have broad ideas. But there's some people who like, prefer that. There's some people who like a lot of details, but there are some people who are upset by too many details. So I presented one that has the basic, broad ideas, one that has many details, and one that's halfway in between. But more importantly, it gives an idea of how the thing was constructed. I was happy to take the lead on this and getting all the assistance from the other members of the committee and the other groups that we presented it to because I spent years developing outcomes-based curriculum and other plans. So started with the mission statement, which is straight from the Energy Plan, is contributing to the, contributing significant, job of the committee would be to contribute significantly to the successful implementation of the Energy Plan. If that's going to happen, what has to take place to make it happen? And these are the four functions on that first broad idea version of it. And the first and probably the most important is that it has to involve the entire community. The plan is not just for government buildings and government projects. It involves the transportation, the residential, the business side of the community, and that's where most of the savings are going to have to take place. And the Energy Plan at present is one of the most closely held secrets in the town of Bennington. The planning activists last May Day had a booth at the, for the May Day, and we gave people a chance to answer questions about what they would favor and what they might oppose in this whole area. And one that they could put a little dot up to support was following the Energy Plan. I then asked them, "Do you know what the Energy Plan is?" And there weren't more than five or six of the many, many people who put dots on there who knew that we really did have an Energy Plan at hand. So there's awareness that there is a plan, that there is a need for that plan, both in the energy and the climate goals that that plan incorporates, and to make, create a willingness to be involved. The second function flows from that. The committee cannot do it by itself. The Select Board cannot do it by itself. The Planning Commission cannot do it by itself. The function is to develop a network of like-minded individuals and community groups within the community. There are a lot of people in this town who realize the seriousness of the problem and are ready to act if people get them involved. So this, bring the, shall we say, the converted together first, then help them with the field work of getting the job done. The third is to really assist local government agencies, communities, and individuals to recognize when they see an opportunity or when they can create an opportunity, to be more energy efficient, more aiming at sustainable energy. And the last one is to recognize that Bennington cannot do this alone, that it will require some state action, will require some regional action. And this is why we're so happy to have this connection with the BCRC because here's a community, a larger community we're already involved with. The group itself does not intend to be the Energy Committee. That really is a function the Select Board has to take. But we have developed a list of them. But to go on with the plan itself, so that first page is just those four functions. Then the next question I would ask myself and hope other people ask them, okay, what are some of the kinds of things that can be done to perform that function? And so that's the second page of the plan, the four functions with some ideas, broad areas of things that can be done to accomplish that. And then, so that people can understand more specifically, the third version has those first two, and examples would be doing that kind of action. So I would thank the Planning Commission because they were the first ones we presented it to. And the Planning Commission said, yeah, it looks important, but you know, there are a lot of ideas about committees, but what are they supposed to do? And who's going to be on? So the function I worked on most diligently was coming up with the functions.
Bill, next is Bill Twing.
Can I just ask, do you have extra copies? I'm just wondering if maybe people in the audience would like to share or see.
Okay. My name is Bill Twing, and I'm a member, recent, new joint member of this committee. They've been doing a lot of work before I got on board. I'm just going to share with you what is on page nine. And basically, I'm just going to read it here. "The Bennington County Regional Commission, with the help of the Climate Advocates of Bennington, has compiled a list of Bennington residents who have expressed the willingness to serve on a volunteer energy committee for the town of Bennington and have expertise and interest in local energy issues. These individuals indicated a desire to serve on a committee either at the Regional Energy Forum hosted by BCRC this January or through personal communications with BCRC or Climate Advocates of Bennington. The BCRC and the CAB suggest some overlap between the Town Committee, which will be reporting to the Select Board, and the Climate Advocates of Bennington, who are more of a free agent in that operation, in order to minimize duplication of efforts and establish healthy collaboration. However, the BCRC and the CAB do not intend to expressly endorse anyone from this list. It is our hope that the Select Board will make those decisions based on your wisdom. And it is our hope that this list is a helpful starting point for the Select Board should it wish to appoint Energy Committee members other than the ones that appear on the list." So there's nine on the list, and that should be sufficient to establish a good quality Energy Committee, consistent with your energy element in a Town Plan.
I think the practice for all our Commissions and Committees is for, basically, an application to the committee or the Commission. And it comes before the Select Board. And we decide, or the Select Board decides as a group to appoint to the Commissions. So, albeit that these are wonderful names, and I recognize quite a few, when the, and if the Board decides to reinstitute the Energy Committee, it'll be that whole process, which will start in April, I expect, right?
Typically, that's when we appoint Commissions.
Yeah. So that would be the expectancy of that.
Yeah, but all of these people could apply. And not only that, maybe much more importantly, I think these committees and commissions are best and highest functioning when other people attend. So not just the committee members. These would be open meetings, and so all of these people would be welcome to, you know, participate at some level. There might be a vote that had to happen that only the committee members would be on, but our practice, anyway, has been to open it up to everybody. And anybody who wants to apply can. And then we try to balance it out to the best of our ability. So, but, yeah.
How do you want to go on this with? I mean, and I just think that the committee, I think the Board has to decide whether or not to reinstitute the Energy Committee, based upon the presentation tonight. But also, let's open up to questions from the Board, to the presenters here, to see if there's some thoughts relative to the outline that is really very well done. And it's going to be helpful. Many times you get sort of a blank sheet, blank page, when a committee comes into.
Here you get three levels of detail.
Yeah. It's already, you know, basically, I shouldn't say the heavy lifting is done, but it really gives the direction and also the focus of where the committee should spend its time and energy and resources. And appreciate that effort, David, and all. Other questions from the committee? Chad, do you have?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you guys for your work. And as Carson said, very detailed information you presented with us. So thank you.
I'm really happy you're coming forward with this. I think Bill and I were on the Bennington Energy Committee maybe 20 years ago, 15 years ago, a long time ago. And it morphed into BCRC's Regional Energy Committee. It didn't have the teeth that it needed to be effective in Bennington. So I think coming back was something that's stronger and has more of a place and more of a clear description of function is really important. So I think this is a really great thing you're doing. Thank you.
I need no convincing on this topic. I think energy and really climate change is an issue of the age for us. We have to work on this, and we have to give everything we have to it. So I strongly support what you're doing. Having said that, I think that the process piece here is that if this Board sets up a committee, we set that committee up with some expectations. You know, we set that committee up with some kind of question to answer or some sort of something to give us back. And so I do think this Board should chew on this presentation and not at this meeting. I think we should probably take a vote at a subsequent meeting, as kind of is our practice.
Well, that would be, but I don't think we're going to be appointing or creating the committee tonight. I think exactly how you should, you're.
Could you guys speak up? I can't read.
Yeah. That's what we have these mics for. Cheers, Joe. We have those conversations between ourselves just now. We do have to take, do have to take the presentation and actually create the committee. The functions, I think, are going to be a work in progress that the committee is going to have to determine with the direction of the Select Board as to what we expect its function.
Right.
And also with the appropriate reports so that we know that this is an outcome-based committee, that it's not just going to be meeting and not having a mission and a result.
Right. Yeah, and so I really like the beginnings of your recommendation. I think it's an excellent start. And as has been said, I think it's, we're very lucky to have you done this prethinking on this. The one piece, of course, that makes me a little nervous is just the one line that says, under assisting local government agencies, one of the goals, as stated, is to develop an appropriate relationship, no, no, sorry, wrong one, to work with the town to determine feasibility and take steps towards hiring a Bennington Energy Coordinator. And I guess as a Select Board member, I would dial that back just a little bit and say, you know, work with the town to determine the feasibility, maybe, and full stop there. And then let's see what that might mean to the town and what might come out of that. So I'm not sure that we would want to start with creating a paid position at this point, but maybe something that would come out of the work down the line.
Understood.
Can't help but.
That's. Pitch pennies.
Doctor?
That's exactly the way we see it. We don't want to burden the town with any expenses upfront. We want to get things rolling and then have the committee and the Select Board consider someone dedicated to the problem of energy conservation.
Great. I think the initial chair of that committee is going to have a heavy burden to be that, deliver that message. But that's.
David, can you give some examples of what this, I mean, last month, last week, thought it would be a tractor to what this kind of position would be? You're talking about reduction of expenses on a number of levels.
I don't have the, any details of what it would mean to Bennington. However, other communities have found a great deal of savings in hiring somebody to be the foreman, so to speak, or the person who is the point person for conservatory efforts and switching to fossil fuels, from fossil fuels to renewable energy. Many of the towns that I'm aware of have found great benefit in savings.
I think in most cases so far, the Energy Coordinator has focused on the government, town government itself, saving money, and has been quite successful in doing that. We're really looking at a much larger job here.
Good.
Converting a community is much harder than converting a board.
There was an article in the Banner just about a week ago about the Dorset Energy Committee and specifically what they've done just in the town itself, not in the larger community, but in the things that the town is responsible for and the amount of money that has been saved in that. And I realize there's a lot that's already been done by the town of Bennington, but there's a lot more that can be done, and there's a lot more money that can be saved, just through conservation methods, not just efficiency, but conservation itself.
But also, I think this is going to be, has to be a regional dialogue and approach and cross-pollination of ideas and oversight. And eventually, maybe the BCRC will have the ability financially and otherwise to hire that individual to oversee and maybe coordinate amongst the local commissions or committees. But, you know, I'm painting a picture. I don't know how to.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong. I'm not saying we never hire anyone. I'm saying I wouldn't set up a committee whose express purpose was to go try to hire somebody. I would set up a committee who would consider that as an option and bring us some numbers and show us that it's going to be good for taxpayers and good for the community and good for energy. But I just wouldn't set that up as a guiding principle of the committee to begin with.
Yep.
We do not intend to burden you with that, so.
Great. Thank you.
Madison, do you have any other examples of towns that are, you said you have five other meetings coming up here soon?
Yes.
Is there anybody, you mentioned on the end, Dorset, just had some good examples. Are you working on any other towns we might use as kind of good people to compare ourselves to?
Yes, so Dorset and Manchester have had energy committees. Manchester only recently, but Dorset for much longer. I was recently told that Rupert created a more informal committee. I'm talking with Arlington and Jaffrey about committees and potentially Pownell as well.
Great. And then you're with us till next November?
Next November, but the BCRC will be applying for another Vista and has had four or five. So it's not that the position won't be filled.
And this has been your focus, or it's your focus for the next year?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we have a, not that we have a staff member doing it, but this is a pretty fortunate opportunity to have somebody like this to kind of run with that.
Yeah, and I can't speak to BCRC's future funding or, you know, any position within that, but we do look forward to potentially hosting more forums and regional events to kind of keep the energy and momentum flowing as far as conversations regionally.
I'd just like to focus on committee members and how that process would work. Tom, are you thinking of that it would be similar to how we appointed the Charter Change Review Committee?
This would be a permanent position.
But it would be permanent, not temporary. Okay, but, so I guess if I were interested, I'd be thinking about what's the time commitment The charter review was a very short, you know, kind of an interview. They submitted some information and they came in and we interviewed them, you know, kind of informally. So I guess I would be interested in you sharing that kind of information, making it public for people that were interested and possibly serving. I don't know if you have the information now, but, and like, numbers of people, would we, is that up to us? Is that up to this, you know, all those details?
I think it's going to be, words prerogative.
To choose the number?
To choose and to say, we need eight members, because we're not a member committee and we're out seeking interested parties to serve on it.
And a deadline, you know?
That is up to you. Just with experience from other communities, the number of members on a committee is completely how many community members are interested and willing to serve. So some committees have two people, some have several dozen, and it's really just tapping into people's interest in the most effective way. And then as far as time commitments, it's also completely volunteer, so some towns have just more perhaps retired folk who have time to dedicate to these issues, but it's up to the committee members as well.
I think this, the board has to decide here, rather than a vote, what's the, if I could potentially get a consensus of interest in creating or reinstituting? What is your, if I were to take a vote right now, would the board be interested in creating or reinstituting the Energy Committee as part of its function? Would you be interested?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Therefore, I think it's the board's responsibility and prerogative to take what you've presented tonight, and feel free to amplify upon it if you'd like to tonight, and codify that and come back with, here's our committee, and the board would then decide to adopt the committee as part of our committee functions.
By when?
Well, we could do it pretty quickly, probably. We could do it at our next meeting. We could do it first, so we've got a meeting coming up.
How many meetings do we have between now and?
We have to talk about that.
Let's have a meeting to have a meeting.
We have a meeting, we have the town meeting. And then we should probably meet twice more in March. Usually we meet just to do warrants, et cetera, right after town meeting, and then we have a regular meeting.
Why don't we try to make it so that the next time we do actual meeting-meeting business, that we could move on this and get that in place, so as of April 1st? Please, yeah.
I'm one of the two of us. I was talking about the formation of the committee, that in most other places, it's a more informal setup. The fact that a committee would be a function of your request and appointment gives them some power and some recognition authority. On the other hand, it's a committee of just citizens, and my guess is that the membership will float, that is, people will come and go off that committee. And I wonder if the select board wants to be involved more or less on a continuing basis than appointing new members all the time. So I have no advice for you. I just want.
Those are really important, but I think the hope is, and I hear the presentation tonight, is that this will be formal enough so that it'll have the ability to speak to the select board and expect to get a response based upon the effort that that committee that's been delegated with that responsibility undertakes. I'm sorry about the mic.
Yeah, I think there has to be enough formality so that, that there is a charge and that you can come back and say, here's what we recommend. So I think there is a level of formality that has to accompany that in order to make it real.
Absolutely, and with that formality comes a certain amount of rigor, which I assume you're aware of, you know, so posting notification of meetings, keeping minutes, you know, the public has to be allowed to come, public access, you know, so all those things would be requirements. It couldn't be too informal, I guess is what I'm saying. It would have to be, if it's a committee of the select board, it would have to.
Subject to open meeting functions and all of those other things.
Yep, which makes blessing, frankly.
But meeting, you do come and go. Lynn, yes.
Just a comment on that. I was on the turn of the committee, and the nice thing about that is that the core people that were appointed were rigorous and were there every week, but we always had also to the public for, you know, that's a lot of time. We had public forums, so you got those people that didn't really want to commit to a full-time job, but they still could get their opinions heard and. So, but it's worth, it actually worked.
Points well taken. I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes.
I would go along with the formality of the communication back and forth, but I don't really feel as pro an appointed group of people that have some power that they would liaison with you without, again, community being able to access them, because there's lots more people out here with energy enthusiasm desires and they would want to be involved in. So I would like to see a little more of the availability of the community members to be involved as well.
We think that we have two levels of, two levels of action here. One is that the formal committee, which we endorse, by the way, we endorse a formal committee that reports to the select board, but then in the background, we have the climate activists of Bennington, and we, we're a small group, there are about 50 members, but we would see ourselves assisting whenever possible the formal committee set up by the select board. So there would be two ways that people could interact with these issues.
Something basic function that is listed is develop a network of right-minded individuals and groups within the community, and we're all for community involvement.
I think this committee could be along with all of its support through the group as it becomes larger or smaller. This is going to be a pretty active group early on. I can just see that. And so that only benefits the community because the reports, and I think usually we'd like to have a report on a quarterly basis, so it'll come back here and it'll be much more vibrant, but you'll have a lot of resources from across the spectrum. I'm pretty impressed. Mike?
It just occurs to me, from the perspective of the planning commission and also based on the support that you've expressed tonight, the one key ingredient to this right now is commitment. I can't remember the last time the planning commission talked about energy consumption and climate. I don't know that the select board has had that conversation in the recent past. The town takes on the responsibility of making sure that we're using the full oil as we can, that our vehicles are kept up and are operating properly, and that our new buildings that we've occupied are energy efficient, and then our older buildings are as energy efficient as we can. But from the standpoint of public policy, since we, since the time we stopped having an energy committee, I think we lost commitment, and this and your partnership will bring that commitment back.
Very well stated, Michael. I think that is really it. And again, part of this ebb and flow is we have been ebbing too long and it's time to get back in the flow. And that's the critical thing. We have only a specific amount of time to deal with these critical issues at all levels, and if we don't deal with them at our local level, we're not going to, no one's coming through the door to take care of our situation. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Welcome. Where are you from?
Around.
You're from Bennington area?
I come around a lot, but I'm in Adams, Massachusetts.
Oh, okay. That's okay. You can come across, send warning. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our downtown transportation grant for, and this specifically speaks to the splash pad. We have Lynn Green and Catherine Briers here to share some of the background so that we can proceed accordingly with the process.
So I'm going to go ahead and introduce you folks, because they don't really need an introduction, but I will do that. We're here this evening to talk about, as Tom mentioned, the downtown transportation fund grant opportunity, and the request tonight would be that the select board support the effort, the grant application to fund the completion of the splash pad project that you've already approved. I'm going to let Lynn talk about where we are as far as fundraising and where we are in the project, but we're really just hoping that the select board will want to authorize this grant so that we can attempt to complete this project as quickly as possible. We had hoped to phase it in over two phases and complete it this summer. If we don't get this funding, we'll keep pushing, and it may take a little longer, but we will finish it. But this would give us a big jumpstart to finish this summer, this fall. The request is for, the request, the grant amount requested is for $85,000 approximately, and Grove Bennington has committed to find the match, to raise the match, whether in-kind or cash donations, the match is 50/50, so it would be, the match amount would be $85,000 as well. We've said too much already, Lynn and Catherine can finish that up, but some of you, I think everybody knows Lynn because she's been around a lot, and she's probably our hardest-working volunteer and biggest cheerleader for Bennington, so.
Oh, great.
It's a pleasure to work with her. And Catherine, who has stepped in, as you know, our C D director, has moved on to other things, and Catherine jumped right in and said she would be willing to prepare this application for us, so she has done that. She did a great job, and we really appreciate her jumping in and taking the time to do that, so.
Dan, I've got a first question.
Sure.
Just cut to the chase on this. This is no pocket money for the town.
That's correct. Yes.
Then we can have a conversation.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Do we vote?
Can they speak?
Then we proceed.
I'm okay with just voting. Just in case the public who's watching at home or anyone in the audience wants to know. So as far as, I was just going to give you a quick overview, 30 seconds of why this park, quick update on where we are in funding the park, and then just open up to questions. Really, Kat really picked up the ball here as far as these applications can be really cumbersome, and she was amazing at pulling together all the details that they wanted for this application. And I think very importantly, what Dan said, is this is not asking for any town dollars, but it is a town property, therefore the town is the applicant. So as far as the overview, parks, playgrounds, interactive water features are consistently heralded as some of the key elements in downtown revitalizations. This park also has a restroom, and restrooms are the number one people that people, that passersby stop in a downtown. We want them to stop, go get a yogurt, go into Madison's, go into Belly Deli, walk into Bringing You Vermont and look at the gift shop and buy some things, et cetera. So we need foot traffic downtown, and parks, playgrounds, interactive water features bring that, both with locals and with people passing through. From a health and wellness standpoint, it's a wonderful outdoor recreation space for citizens to walk to, and I think very importantly, too, it's right across from the senior center, so being a really wonderful space for seniors to pop over and enjoy as well. And parks can also create a sense of connectedness for the community, and it really is a space for people to just, citizens to connect with one another. So those are the reasons that we think that this is a really, a project that benefits the community, benefits downtown. The fact that the park already owned, is already owned by the town gave us that foot leg forward. As far as funding, we did this a little bit, I guess, against normal convention in that we started Phase One, and that was because Catamount Connections had a grant that had to be spent by 1231, so we worked with Larry McLeod at the town to really, he's been the champion of being able to kind of be the general contractor to kind of help us manage this. And so he figured out how we could lay the first part of the program called Phase One and get that going, some of that in the ground before the end of the year. So Catamount Connections had a grant that's covered about 40% of Phase One. Grove Bennington raised the other 60% of Phase One, and so we've got Phase One covered. And now to truly compete, complete the park in the manner that we think is beneficial, given that it's such a highly visible park, we are applying for this grant to help us get the rest of the way. As far as, if I could just speak for one moment, I think the sense of community already is so evident in this park, just by some of the, the way that this funding, fundraising has happened. I wouldn't say completely easily, it's hard work, but the people are really excited about this park. The Bank of Bennington, Cindy and Brooke Thompson of the Northside Dairy Bar, Goldstone Architecture, Southern Vermont Medical Center, the Catamount Rotary has just given us a very large match of $15,000, which we're working against now to make that match. And so many other businesses, individuals, whether it's $25, $500, $2,500, people really giving us that sense of confidence that they want this park. We've also done some, I think, kind of creative grant writing with some players that we wouldn't usually see in Bennington, Northeast Dental Dental, Ben &amp; Jerry's, the Stewart Shops. So really, it's coming from a lot of different places. I think there's a lot of support. The last one I want to put in a plug for is our partnership that we're starting with the Career Development Center Building Trades, and they're going to be framing out the stage, and we're so excited about that. And we're, I'm just chatting with a few other people over there that we're trying to make that an even deeper connection, but we're really excited about them being a part of this. And now we'll turn it over to you for questions, and Kat really pulled this together, so she has a lot of the details as well. Anything you wanted to say?
No, I just reiterate what Dan said. I'm kind of here stepping in while there's the transition and the Community Development Director that would normally be doing this kind of stuff, but this is also what we helped the town do, so it fit for us, and I'm just happy to help bring this across the finish line.
Yeah, and she did an amazing job.
Now, is this a competitive application?
Very much so, although I guess this year there is, this round there is some additional funding, so maybe smidge less competitive, but it is very competitive, although we feel this is a very compelling grant, and I know that Catherine and others have had conversations with the folks who run the program. They did encourage us to apply with this type of project. Is that accurate, Catherine?
Yes, we were thinking of applying for, Recycle, an application from last year for this fund that was not successful, and in having one-on-one conversations, we realized that that was really not going to be successful. When we pitched this idea, they were very excited about it. And it was, you know, this is one of these grants that is very clear in a rubric of how it's, you know, points for different parts, and so this is why we write all these grants, is we know how to hit all those points. So I'm very confident that this will be successful. It's something that they're excited to see from the town.
Great, because it's coming in, not at the beginning, it's coming in at the middle. Is that an advantage or disadvantage to getting a grant, award?
My sense is that at this point, it's an advantage. They actually have a question in the application asking if projects are already underway, and if they are, you know, what phase is this in the project? And so to be able to speak to that and say, yes, all of this, you know, has already gone in, and this is really just to complete it, I believe that that's points towards the application.
Great. And one last question before I probably take in everyone else's. Timeline for getting the application, getting the rest of the construction done?
And we are working through a few of those fine points this week as we turn this in as far as the timing, but we are looking, I don't know, Kat, if you want to fill in on here, but like, for example, the CDC is going to start work in March on framing out the stage. That's kind of considered still Phase One because it was already committed to. So we're looking at having most of the stage and the rest of the splash pad work done, you know, by early summer. And then the other elements really fall into place depending on whether we got this grant and how long it takes to get the bids out there, et cetera. So we would hope that by early fall, we, you know, have our grand opening, even if there are a few little touch-up projects after that.
Great. And we've got the benefit of having the grant application. Great. I know we've got the benefit of having the grant application right in front of us, but I bet the community's sort of interested as to when it's gonna happen.
And I think what's really exciting, I think sometimes as a town we can be really hard on ourselves. But this was really just a concept less than a year ago. And the fact that we broke ground in September and that we're looking at, you know, possible completion by early fall, I think that's really exciting. And it really speaks to this community coming together to make this happen.
Tennis speaks to you championing it.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you for all that you've done on this, many times over.
You and your whole group.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Kayla Becker from Catamount Connections.
There's a lot of people, but it's just, it's amazing how quickly you, this has come together compared to a lot of other projects, so.
Other questions? And you feel free to.
I have a question about, so great project, all in, waiting for the fundraising letter to come.
Check your mailbox.
It's a, it's a big nut to crack, you know, 85,000. I, I do a lot of fundraising, as you may know, and I, I just wonder, could, would it be possible to count some other things towards the match? Either that 15,000 that's coming from the Vermont Arts Council or the work that the CDC is doing? Or other things that would allow us to use a higher match number so that you didn't have to raise quite so much money and could ask for a little bit more?
It's a very good question. It's a little tricky because of the Phase One, Phase Two and things that were already committed to. We felt like we didn't want to be disqualified, you know, by that kind of gray area, so we, we opted to keep those in Phase One. But you raise a very good point about kind of the gifts in kind, labor, those kind of things that we might be, they will allow you to use that for the match. Do you have any other?
They do allow for donations in kind and we do intend to.
So contractors gave you a good deal on something and they could, they could qualify that they saved you $5,000 or something. You could use that towards match to leverage more money?
Right, like if a landscape company says, okay, we'll charge you for the plants, but we'll do the installation, that installation is a donation in kind.
But that's not reflected in this funding sources piece. This, this looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that's as if everything was, was done by contractors, but we, we can certainly, if we have in-kind donations, we can use, we don't have to have that cash. So if we get $7,000 in service, that's a $7,000 towards that match.
And if I can jump in, because you brought up specifically a number that's in there and the numbers are a little bit confusing. The Animating Infrastructure Arts Grant, in conversations with the folks that oversee this fund. Since that is, we won't hear back from that until two weeks, I believe, after we hear about this. So I posed that question to them, should we be including that as match or not? They said, well, if you are confident that you can otherwise fundraise it, then put that in, show that confidence. We wanna see that confidence. If we do get the grant, then I have done the homework because you can't use state funds to match state funds. But that should count as a, as a match. We just, in the way we write the grant, we don't want to be banking on that at this point.
Okay, all right, great. I'm not criticizing, I'm just trying to get you all the pennies you can here.
Yep. We've got our eyes on that as a match as well.
Keep up the good work. That's it for me.
I have no questions, just really excited and thank you, thank you, thank you. I got to enjoy a splash pad last week in Hollywood, Florida, so can't wait to enjoy one.
Somehow I saw a picture of that.
Yes, I heard.
Really? Did you enjoy it more than the kids or?
Didn't get wet. I was just enjoying the, the view and the scenery of the ocean with the splash pad.
I don't wanna hear about it.
No, I just wanna say thank you. This is really exciting. Can't wait for it to open.
Okay.
So what I would need, if you folks are amenable, to pass a motion to support the submissions grant and sign this review.
Can I just ask when's the award date?
It's, it's late April.
Great.
Yeah, like the third week of April.
Is that right?
Oh, to submit it is March 11th.
And the award is late April.
Late April.
I would entertain a motion to proceed with the downtown transportation grant application.
So moved.
A second. Other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the grant application, signify by aye. That's seven in favor and no opposition to the application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With enthusiasm, right?
Thanks to everyone in the community that's been so great about this.
The trees on Main Street look beautiful, by the way.
Yes. Do. Guess we're gonna go right into the budget presentation, Dan.
So Stuart and Melissa put this together and I will do my very best, short notice, to give it justice. But I think it's a fairly straightforward presentation. The select board asked the staff to do a brief overview of the proposed budget. Impact on taxpayers, it's, it's some trends over the past few years. It's similar to what we've done in the past when we used to do a joint presentation with the school board. But given the vagaries of what's gonna happen with school board budgets this year, we, we're gonna go it alone on this one.
I like going alone. Yes.
So this slide just represents the town's budget. This is proposed, this is, this is without ballot agencies, so it's consistent across the board. Doesn't include ballot agencies, so it gives you a real apples-to-apples comparison. So from 2019 to 2020, there is a 2.6% increase in the budget. And you can see those are similar over the past several years. It's, it's approximately tracking a little less than inflation. This is just a slide that kind of gives folks a, a, a look at where their dollars go when it comes to town government. As you can see, the Highway Public Works Department is, is the, is the biggest chunk at 31%. Public Safety, close behind at 29%, and then Administration, General Administration Services at 25%. The Recreation Number, that's 5%, that actually does include the Senior Center, so that's Rec and Senior Center together. And then that, that Agency is at 7%, includes all the agencies, including those that are in the budget and not on the ballot separately. So that's, that's all the agencies. And then you see the Fire Department at 3%.
Those are Rescue Squad?
Yes. So the agencies include Rescue Squad, Library, both the libraries, B C R C, all those are included. According to my Finance Director, Melissa, I didn't check the numbers myself, but she was very adamant that that, that includes all the agencies. So that's what that, that number is.
And there they are.
And there they are. So the agencies, is you, the ones that are included in the municipal budget, right around $750,000. And those on the ballot, another 131. It's a significant, nearly $900,000 of additional funds above and beyond the pure municipal budget. The largest being the library and the second being the Rescue Squad. Those are the two big ones that are included in the municipal budget.
So Dan, just to be clear, this 2020 General Activities Fund breakdown just includes the right-hand, the left-hand column that you're looking at there?
I'm sorry, just to.
The, this, this pie chart that you just showed.
Includes everybody, valided and in municipal.
It does.
Yes, it does. That's according to Melissa.
The first slide is only the municipal?
This first slide is just the municipal.
Okay.
That anticipates, so the agency, 7%, is it 7%?
7%.
Yep. So that's about 1%, 1% or something like that of additional?
Yes, if you're talking about the agencies, yes.
So if they were all fail, it'd be 6%?
Yes.
In this slide? Okay.
Okay. So this is just a picture of our grant list. We're over, we've been for a few years, over a billion dollars in total value. There is slight increases. They're not large, but we are headed in the right direction. As you saw back in 2015, it looks like we were in, going in the wrong direction, so it's good to see we have three years of growth. And this does not, this is obviously not reflective of what we'll see this year. So we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see what, what that, we expect, we expect it to continue to rise, but I don't know what kind of percentage we're looking at.
On, in 2013 was a nice jump there. Any, what I counted for that? Recall?
I don't, I couldn't, I, I couldn't tell you what, what the, whether there were several smaller projects or one very large project that would have jumped us in that. But that was a significant jump.
That was 2011.
No, 2012.
Irene was in 2011.
You're right, yes. I remember it well.
This would be really increases by like automobile dealerships and all of those things coming.
It could be, it could be, it could have been, you know, I just don't, I'd have to.
Was that back then?
No. Well, we could easily look back on, in the, in the annual report and see if there's anything that sticks out as, as a very large project. It could be just multiple projects, but I just didn't, I don't, I don't recall that specifically. So that gives you the idea of our grant list, kind of holding steady, but it hit it in the right direction. And this is the last kind of substantive slide. This is just a record of our, over the past few years, our municipal tax rate. And this year, without the ballot agencies, the ballot agencies, that's 1.8%, which is really very respectable, given that the costs don't typically go down, so.
So if we took the ballot agencies and 1.8 is without, and you go right back to the first slide, is it? It says 2.6. Is that the difference?
Well, the 2.6% is the budget. It's the amount of dollars, pure dollars compared to last year. And then the 1.8% is the tax rate. So there's, there's a lot that goes into that. You have to talk about the grant list. You're talking about how much your revenues are to offset those sorts of things. So there's a lot of things that go into that and it's, it's not a pure comparison.
No, it isn't, because it's state aid and all of those.
Yes, so it gets a little tricky, but this number really shows the impact on the taxpayer. This is the impact, the 1.8%.
And that's without ballot items?
That's without the ballot agencies, so yes, when, folks need to recognize when they vote for those ballot agencies, it does increase that number. Because that, that's a direct increase on the tax rate. Every, so we just need to understand that that's, that's a choice we're making.
And we continue to remind people of that.
Yeah.
It doesn't make a difference.
So we're clear, that for me, that shows what we've done here.
Yes, yes.
Well, this slide shows what we've done too.
It doesn't make any difference to the voters.
Well.
The tax rate does.
You're right.
No, he means.
No, I mean in, in effect that we've kept it to 1.8, but with the ballot measures, it's 2.6.
Totally different number.
Yes, it's a different number, but it is a significant.
Not very far. Well, for each 100,000, right, it's going to be.
About a penny on the.
Yeah, penny, so it's really 1.92 or something. Is that, Chad, what's the math?
So it'd go up to 1.9%? I think that's important to say as well. I mean, I mean, there's a reason that, that those nonprofits are on the ballot.
And, and the folks have, it's their choice, so that's why it's on there. So that's all the slides I have that are substantive. These are just kind of reminders.
Dan, what's the time of floor meeting?
Oh, you got me on that one.
Sorry. Six, six o'clock. Six o'clock.
Mr. Cullen House. Thank you.
School board goes first.
And again, the six o'clock is assuming that.
CDC, they all go. I think it's usually about seven.
We know, not until seven, but all the other ones come before us, right.
What is the CDC?
It's right after, 15 minutes after or something.
Well, so everything starts at six.
Everything starts at six.
Will you, will you be presenting this again? Or is this it?
I mean, that's up to you folks. Typically, we would do that at a Feb, at a February meeting, this particular presentation. But, I mean, you could present it again.
Just have it rolling. There's only been lots or whatever.
Everybody would like to see it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, we probably haven't had your all, so before we got tonight, thank you people.
It's up to you folks. I just worry about that meeting. There's probably a lot going on at the meeting, whether we wanna add this to it or not. That's up to you folks. Well, we could do it right after or before Zirwatt's presentation.
Can we add it to the website?
Oh, add, we can add this to the website.
I think, you know, there's lots of times people, like, I think, but you're right, I think, that of course would be great, but.
There's a lot of things gonna be going on.
Well, this is available if, if we wanna do it, it's fine.
I'm just wondering if at least we could have some of these available for people to pick up.
Simple, yeah.
Because it isn't, yeah, I mean, it's in color, so.
I like picking it up almost more than having it on the, so when people come in to get there, it'll be right there.
And Dan, if there are any left over after the meeting, I'll take them, because these are great charts for my math classes and we can convert the percentages to actual dollars.
Get back to us.
Yes, you can, yeah, we can charge.
I'm all in favor of that.
So no copies available for folks, it'll be as they walk in. Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
See, the, this year, the hope is that Zirwatt will come in with sort of a report on last year.
Yep, and she will. She'll be here. Yes, well, we, I've worked on the report with her, so yes, she'll be here.
So I think that's, it makes it a little more interactive and the regular floor meeting will take its own course, as we know. And we might have a surprise or two as well.
Yes.
I'll share that with you when it happens.
Ice cream?
But that would be good. Ben &amp; Jerry's sponsored by.
So that is all I have on that presentation and I will make, or make them available.
It's a nice presentation. It's really, it's straightforward to understand. I love it.
We need a, other business right now?
Do I have to do the liquor licenses?
We have to do.
Yeah, as we're doing the liquor licenses, could we?
Yes.
Are you doing?
I do have a manager's report.
Yep, is there anything that we need to?
There are a couple of action items. The first is a request for an appointment to the Bennington County Regional Commission. We've been more, we've been trying several years now for, to fill a seat. And finally, John Hale has, has agreed to serve in that position. We, if you folks were amenable, we'd ask that you appoint him to the position and have an expiration of March of 2021. John is, I believe John's a great choice. He's already been serving on the Bennington County Regional Commission as a, as a representative of, of local businesses. Once the B C I C and the B C R C kind of merged together, although B C I C still exists as a separate entity that they've, they've joined together in a, in a, in a common governments, governance. John's position was, was removed, so he, he, he was serving and now he, now he is not able to serve because we removed that local business representative position from B B P C R C because of B C I C's involvement now.
Can I have a motion to appoint John?
So we'd love to see John on there.
A motion to appoint John Hale to the B C R C, second. Discussion on the motion.
I think John's an excellent choice.
Yes.
And the vacancy is going to be, it says current vacancy position expires March 20. How long is that position expiring 2021?
Yes, we would like, if you appoint him, we'd like it to go to the March 2021, otherwise he'd be reappointed, relying in a month.
So maybe the motion could indicate that, that will be position expiring March 2021. Yep. No more discussion, right, I don't think, unless there's somebody has an interest. Signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven in favor, no opposition.
One other quick item. You may even recall the effort, I think, no, no, Jeanie may recall, the We Make Cool Stuff effort. Our local manufacturers had, had, had written several articles to the banner in the past. They have gotten together. A number of manufacturing businesses are planning to form for April 3rd. Entitled We Make Cool Stuff, it'll be right here at the fire facility from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to highlight local manufacturing job availability. This, these folks are seeking $200 sponsorship from the town. The folks involved are Command, N S K, Hale Mountain, and others. That's, that's the request. They've asked for a $200 sponsorship.
Got a banner?
Excuse me?
We got a banner. Brought to you by?
It's actually brought to you by April Career Month. Okay, it's, it's part, it's under that umbrella.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Same as April.
Yes, and the articles will still happen. It's got a new secret name for them.
Also want to mention Mac Molding and K and E Plastics, they're also involved. What does the two, come in?
Yeah.
Yes, when it comes forward. But what does the $200 do? I mean, I know it's an amount of money that's kind of minimal, but it just seems like we're giving them the building. It just seems like an odd request, like-
So, they've asked for, we're hopeful the form will go well, and they're gearing up for marketing efforts such as promotional video that would produced by the Bennington Chamber and Cat TV.
Okay.
This all costs money, so we're actively seeking $200 sponsors for the form.
Right.
That's, that's all I, yeah, I get where it goes. Just was curious.
A motion to approve the sponsorship at $200? So, okay, got a first and second, and more discussion?
Well, not particularly to this, but I know several weeks ago, we had a debate about having a policy about similar small requests. And just wanted to remind the chair that we should develop that policy, so we can be consistent as a board.
I agree, Chad. I agree wholeheartedly, you know, that who's not in favor of workforce development? We're all in favor of workforce development, but the death by 1,000 cuts is hard. I think we need to sort of have a budget for this kind of thing.
In a sense, you do. You do have a $2,500 select board contingency that you can spend agency fit. There is $2,000 left in that fund. I'm not advocating for or against this particular expenditure, but I, I do want you to know, folks to know that that is discretionary funds for, for those particular-
Just think of a written policy that is consistent to the public, that they know what to expect. If it's under $500,000, this is a formal request, that you follow these A, B, C, and we just have that given set.
Very good point. And we've been down this road before for other amounts, and it'd be nice not to have to revisit, as long as we get a policy in place.
Yep.
So, are we charging that policy?
Chad.
We going to create that policy?
Put it on our next chair.
Well, we, we should do this, we should do this, but, but we shouldn't get bogged down in this tonight.
No, that's not it.
This is, this is not a for-profit group looking for money. This is a nonprofit group that's doing-
It's a great reminder, yeah.
That's doing really important education and workforce development stuff. We, we need, we need to support this. And I agree, Chad, we need to have a very clear policy on how we do these small requests. So, I would, I would say we should, we should-
Vote.
Vote.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now a sponsoring entity for the We Make Cool Stuff Manufacturing Forum.
Under a new name?
No, no, they, they co-opted that name, but there'll be a ban, don't worry. I like my names up there.
I like it.
Yeah.
And informational on the PFOA?
Yes, just that we are still awaiting formal action, but we do believe that we'll be getting, beginning Phase Two this construction season. Design continues, and the state is confident that we'll move forward this, this construction season with Phase Two, which is the east side of town. So, but we don't have any formal, formal contract or anything yet, but we're, we're working towards that hopefully, so.
Any questions of the town manager? Please.
I just have one, and then I have another, something for other business. So, the follow-up. Do you know if there's been any movement on the formation of the committee of community members for the rec center, the oversight of the year?
Yes, we've got together a list of, we've gotten together a list of names recommended to us by folks at the rec center, as well as other stakeholders. And there's, they're slated to meet quarterly, so we want to make sure we have that board committee up and running for a March meeting. So, that would be the first, their first quarterly meeting. We have been working with Jess at the Y, and we're hopeful that we will soon have a community development director on board that can, can spearhead that.
So, people have been contacted to see if they want to serve?
We have not contacted anyone directly. We have a list of names that we are going to reach out to.
Okay.
Yep. And may, maybe add to, we have in-
March is at the end of this week, so it'd be really great.
The quarterly meeting would be the end of March.
Okay, all right. I just, I feel like that committee is crucial.
Oh, absolutely.
We promised the community that we would do that.
Yes.
It's been almost three months, so that would be really, I'm, I'm going to be really frustrated if that doesn't happen. And my, I'll save my other-
Why don't you do it now? I think it's probably good.
We're all, all-
Okay, here we go. So, you probably all remember, at the January 28th meeting, we were here and approved the proposed solar array on the Beal Pearson property out on Monument Avenue. And it's come to light that we were given inaccurate information about whether neighbors had been contacted, and it seems that they were not. So, I am uncomfortable with that vote as it stands. I would prefer that that vote be rescinded, and we ask them to come back at a future meeting and tell us that the neighbors indeed have now been communicated with, and that their, their concerns have been addressed.
Or at least give the, the public the opportunity to come and talk about it, because they didn't hear about it.
Yeah.
They didn't come to talk about it.
Were we in fact told that, yes?
Yeah, and I, I think I'm particularly sensitive about this, because I'm the one who asks the question.
Yes.
And I, I feel like the process possibly could be formalized a little bit more clearly, that it's a requirement of the developer to make sure that they've contacted the neighbors who possibly not only abut the property, but are in view of this, of where the site is, and that the neighbors and people that would be in a direct visual line of the, of the solar array are aware when meetings are occurring. It doesn't seem that that's a formal process, and I think it would just help everyone if it was more formal.
I think as to your question of how we deal with it, because this is really, hasn't been, it's not an agenda item, we probably should have it as part of our meeting to have a motion to rescind that approval or whatever was done. I was more comfortable that day not being here. But I do think that it should be clear, and I expect a planning commission, I already weighed in on this one too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Were they given the same information?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't mean to imply that we'll vote no.
No, but, but I think it has to be done transparently.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And has there been a complaint already from that one particular homeowner who said they, where's this communication coming from? Is it coming from the homeowner who wasn't informed? Are we sure that's actual fact-based?
There was an email from a, one of the property owners who was not informed. It was sent-
It's in, it's in your N-MOBS.
Yeah.
Today.
There we go.
So, I think let's put it on the agenda right now. Is there, is there an issue though about time?
I don't, so here's, here's the situation. As you know, the select board is only advisory to the Public Utilities Commission. So, as far as I know, there has not been an application to the Public Utilities Commission. So, it probably is enough time for us to at our next meeting, take a formal action regarding it.
Is that okay with you folks? So, we'll, we'll table it until the next meeting?
And so, how will we, how will the abutting neighbors know that this is going to be on the agenda?
Well, that's the question. Do you want to have, do you want us to invite the developer back?
Yes.
So, that's what we want to try to do for our next meeting.
Yes.
Invite the developer back, so and we'll, the preface or preview to that will be our removing or repoking, or whatever we do with our consent approval. Is that okay?
And if they can't, then we would say to them-
Oh, that's right.
If they're unable to come, then we would still be on the agenda, but we would rescind our former action. But that, is that the idea? Because they may, they may say, we'd like to come back in a couple of months, and that's fine, but we would just rescind our action. Is that, is that the thinking?
Yep, that's-
Not, not that-
Nope, it's good.
It's likely that you would, I'm not going to say. There hasn't been a vote, but okay. All right.
Anything else, Gene?
That's all. Thank you.
All right.
A couple of things. I'm, as most of you around the stable know, I sit on Commerce and Economic Development Committee. And workforce development was a hot topic this past week. And we've been hearing from witnesses from all over the state, most notably from the Northeast Kingdom, who I wish I could remember the name of the committee that they, or the group that they have, but they foster economic entrepreneurial growth. And several people came to us, two in particular, that just stood out in my mind, that we could apply here in Bennington. And that is, it's two single mothers, who are living together with their little kids, who during the off-hours in closed restaurants, do pop-up restaurants. That's a really great idea. Another woman in, who was in two or three years into recovery through this, this entrepreneurial fostering, has successfully started a yoga class with about 30 clients. And the other thing that I learned from Riva Murphy, I don't know if that name sounds familiar to anybody else around here, but she's in charge of child development services. She told me, because there's, there's a real paucity of daycare services in the state, we're desperate for it. It's important to our growth. And just getting people attracted to coming into the town. Well, what Riva told us was that an individual parent, or you don't have to be a parent, can have up to 10 children in their home. They have to go through a criminal background check and do some minimal training with respect to the state as far as cleanliness. Now, the average Vermonter pays $275 a week for one child. With, if you do 10 child, 10 children over a year, the gross revenue is $132,000, if you had a full slate of kids. Now, I'll come back with more formal information with respect to the, the agencies to contact, but that's an important thing. One of the saddest things that I encountered while I was campaigning was meeting a young woman on Union Street, who, and I asked her, you know, you know, where you work. And she said, well, I don't work. And she said, why? Because if I work, they take away my benefits. And that's pretty sad. But if, if she, if I were able to find her or other people here in town, know that you can have up to 10 children in your home, and make a really decent living, and help out your fellow workers, and the town and the state in general, be a pretty good thing. That's it.
One thing that we talked about, Mr. Rudowitz, Mr., you know, we had the issue with the lack of sewer, is that, do you know if there's been any to reach out to Gene on that end?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I understand what was going on, but I don't know what actions have been taken since then.
Because I think, one, we have to have a policy. I think Donald said, you know, let's get a policy. But I don't think it's fair to Rudowitz to wait for us to challenge ourselves for the policy process and not be responsive to him. So, we either, Stu could strike a deal with him, great. But if not, I think we need to have it as an agenda item.
At our next meeting?
At the next meeting.
I'd like whenever he strikes a deal with him, that it, Stu know about it before he strikes that deal.
Yeah, or it'd be recommendation.
Yes, please.
Is that, is that helpful? Yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah, it goes without saying, and it was on Dan's slide, but Tuesday, March 5th is voting day, and the polls are open from 7 to 7. And you can walk into the town clerk's office and vote anytime before then. So, everybody vote.
Is there a drive-through?
All right, so, continuing on the workforce front, today, I had the pleasure of meeting Ryan Ahern, and he works with Breadloaf, and they are hiring, let me get this right, 35 carpenters and 23 laborers, starting next Tuesday through Friday. They're going to be onsite, and onsite at Putnam Redevelopment Site. And they are, so they're looking for 50 new hires. And what's really great about this, and actually, we put in a, an email to the Development Center as well, to look at graduating seniors, and also involving maybe some of the classes. But the, the 50 new hires, they're looking for at lea, you know, they're looking at a year's, at least one year's worth of work, and they're also looking at career ladder. So, they're looking at having people move into management positions as they gain skill. The other thing is that they're really good paying jobs. So, they pay well. Not only do they have health benefits, but they also have educational benefits of $10,000 a year in educational benefits, which is really, really great. So, just, that's starting next week, and it will continue until they hire their 50 people, which is really fantastic. The other is the Startup 802 Ideas Forum, which is a forum for entrepreneurs in this community. The next round will be March 13th, which is a Wednesday night, 6:15 at the CCV Community Room. And this is just a chance for people that are thinking about starting a business to network in the community, throw out ideas, hear from people that have expertise to, or, or just interest, to give them feedback on, on their ideas. So, it's a nice thing to come to. Thank you.
I'll be real quick. I just want to congratulate some of our student athletes. They've had an amazing week this past week. First off, as most people have heard, the Mont Anthony Wrestling Team has won their 31st consecutive wrestling state championship. Their 31st championship in a row is actually Mont Anthony has an entire school, 100th state championship as a school. So, that was a nice, that's a nice round number as a school for all sports. But this past weekend, also Varsity Cheerleading finished third, and also qualified for New England's. The Varsity Dance Team finished third in the Palm Division for the state championship, and is also qualified for New England's. Members of our indoor track team will be traveling to Boston for New England's, and they've, you know, they've finished several teams, the 4x200, in the boys, 55 meters, there's a bunch. But there's a lot of athletes going to New England, so competing outside of Vermont this weekend. And then coming up tomorrow is senior night for boys basketball, last chance to play in the front of their home crowd. JV starts at 5:30, Varsity at 7. And the girls Varsity Basketball has their first playoff game. They've qualified as the eight seed, and they play the number nine seed Essex at home on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. So, come out and support both teams. Great week, and got a great week coming up.
Great. Good sports wrap-up.
Thanks.
You did it just the time way.
Thank Ashley Hoyt. She put the email together.
Beautiful. Thanks. 31 years, that's pretty amazing, isn't it?
That is amazing.
True. Yeah.
They want to be the team that screwed that one up.
Yeah. They keep on winning. I guess their feeder program too, right?
Yeah, that's a great example.
That's it.
They do a great job.
I guess we need, have a need for an executive session for contract matter and personnel, which are, I'll need a motion for that purpose.
Tom, before we do that, just, and we could certainly do this later, but it would be good for us to determine whether or not we're going to have a meeting on March 11th. I think, given all the things that looks like we want to get done, I may suggest that it makes sense for us to meet on the 11th, as well as our next-
Sure.
As our second meeting in March as well. But it's up to you folks. We'd have to meet at least to do warrants, et cetera, but it makes sense to have a full-blown meeting as much as-
Let's do it on the 11th.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Thanks, yeah. Motion?
Yeah, a motion to go into executive session on a contract and personnel matter.
Second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
The 11th.
Thank you.